As we gather, we recognize that we are on Treaty III lands which are steeped in rich indigenous history and home to many First Nations and Métis people today. We continue to be thankful for partnerships with indigenous people. We give thanks for the many blessings we enjoy in the city of Canora. We seek wisdom in our minds, clarity in our thinking, truth in our speaking, and always love in our hearts, so that we may try always to unite the citizens of Canora. Let these principles guide us in our decision-making.
Moving on the agenda, Declaration of pecuniary interests and the general nature thereof. Item number one on today's agenda, or item number two from a meeting at which a member was not in attendance, seen none. Item number C, confirmation of previous committee minutes. So there's a motion.
Resolution number one, moved by myself, second by Counselor Madoniam. The minutes of the last regular committee, the whole meeting held up to the third, 2022, and the special committee, the whole meeting is held until the 25th. November 17, 22nd, 24, two sessions, 29th and 30th, PKE firm, as you're in.
Thank you. Any discussion? Call, call vote, all in favor? Oppose, none? Carrie, thank you. Moving on the agenda, we have a, we have a very, very packed agenda today, and that's so. Item number D, deputations. We actually have five of them. And I see Joe Barnes is here. Hi, Joe.
How are you guys?
Good. So you're first up on the, on the agenda. Is that, is that okay?
That's okay.
Okay.
You ready for me?
We are ready. Thank you.
Thanks, folks, for inviting us. See a lot of new faces and some old faces, but new faces too. Nice congratulations to everybody. I look forward to working with.
Joe, do you want, do you want to use the podium?
Sure. My name is Joe Barnes and I'm a deputy director of services. I've been there for the last twelve years. And we're a pretty aggressive little organization. We employ approximately 200 people at KCA. And we also own Wigloss, and we employ another 170 there. Our major projects is our youth camp, Youth Wellness Camp. This is a camp that's open to everybody. We've been owners of it for a little over a year now, a year November. And it's a place where we want to bring youth from our communities as well as Canora and area. That we can build peer relations for, for kids and youth, and rebuild families. We get three to 400 kids out there a month now, and they're coming from the schools, they're going horseback riding, they're going sleighing, they're going dog sled sleighing. We're building an outdoor arena there funded by the National Hockey League. Two baseball diamonds are going out there funded by the Toronto Blue Jays. A lot of things. We have a, that, the folks that's been out there, if you remember the old Reds type building, that's now a fully functional restroom. And so we're having events out there where people come out. The OPP was out there recently with Treaty III Police, and they did some training at the facility and enjoyed beautiful lights that was prepared for them. And so it's a community camp. It's not just for First Nations, it's for everybody. Our chiefs want to include everybody in this. Hopefully rebuild some relations in the area. Second biggest one, I guess would be, I should put this one first maybe, but the hospital. We're partners in the new hospital bill. You know, it, it's a big project, it's a big undertaking, there's going to be a lot of resources locally, you know, fundraising that has to be done. But we're going to bring in the federal government and try to augment some of those resources that we require locally. And get the federal government to put some money into the project. So we're working on that. As you know, the, the first phase of that project's finished, we're going into the second phase, and we're meeting the owners early January. Possible property that we're looking at purchasing in January. The next one is 160-bed long-term care facility. We've been awarded 64 new licenses. We own, like I said, Birchwood. We turned it nonprofit. We're just seeking the charitable license for that. And one of the things that, one of the issues that we have with that facility is that we don't get a levy like the other home in town. So there's no levy provided, so right now we're running deficits in the care. But when we took that place over, and if you think about it, that was a horrible place. I gotta tell you, it was a horrible place. Not a lot of people wanted to go there. We have a waiting list now, first time ever. And so the change management that we put in there and the services that we're providing, it's a welcoming place to come to now. The new 160-bed facility, we're looking at putting it at Rapp Portage, you know, where the peninsula was, where that lodge burnt down. That's where the new 160-bed will be built. It's for everybody. It's not just for First Nations, but it's for everybody. And we don't know what we're going to do with the building there. I think we really need supportive housing in town, so we might turn that into a supportive housing. We'll work with KDSB on that one. Uh, what else are we looking at? We have the Community Justice Center downtown. We took the old Minor News building. And we're working with the Ministry of Attorney General. You guys are welcome to go down and see that building, but if you go inside, it's amazing. It's like state-of-the-art building. And that were, is where the Community Justice Center will be in Canora. The other one is Youth Wellness Hub downtown. That's ours as well. We started that, and we have approximately 160 youth access center a month that are living on the street or needing services. That's about it for now. But you know what, one of the things, and I always, I brought this forth last time I was here, but you know, we have issues downtown, we know that, you know. I come from Muskoka. I grew up in Muskoka. I watched Muskoka build, my uncle was mayor. And we ended up starting taxing the people around the lake. And we made an agreement with them that, you know, they had, they had voting rights within the municipalities. And so they, they started paying taxes like everybody else. And I think we have to take a look at that here, because you know, we have a lot of social housing issues downtown. For putting some investment into storefronts, which you know Muskoka did. We can really make Canora attractive for people that want to be downtown. I want my grandchildren to be able to walk down with their moms downtown and not worry about it. So anything that we can do to help out, we're there. But I think we really need to look at taxing the unincorporated territory here. And bringing those resources to build social housing and infrastructure downtown. That's all I can say. Any questions for me?
Counsel, any questions?
Oh, no.
Thank you, your worship. Hi, Joe, good morning. Are you able to share for the Justice Center, is there a date that's, that has been established when it will be operational?
I believe it's mid-December.
Okay, that's exciting.
Yeah. We have to wait till the minister comes, you know, and cuts a ribbon. But it's all finished. It's ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is more of a call date than a question. I had the pleasure of touring the Youth Wellness Hub that they're open also weekend. You got a dynamic group there, and they seem to be doing a great job in the community.
Thank you.
Counselor Manson.
Could you explain to me, if you could, the Community Justice Center, exactly what will that be doing?
We just built the building. We'll provide some of the services. The Community Justice Center, there's three of them in Ontario. We were the third selected site in Canora. And we had arm wrestle for that, to look out, wanted it, and we brought it to Canora. But this is where you're looking at, you know, first-time offenders, where they're coming into the justice system. They end up with criminal records, and that sticks with them for, for what, 10 years, I think it is, before they get pardoned. So we're looking at wraparound services for these individuals instead of putting them into the actual justices and creating that criminal record. We're looking at how can we do some community-based healing for folks and their families. So that's, it's a great opportunity to help kids get out of that system and youth.
Counselor Byrne.
Hey, Joe. Just going to ask about the Youth Wellness Camp. What's the referral process? Is there a mechanism in place that's a clear referral process for agencies to refer to have access to it?
Yep, Serena.
From my vantage point, it seems to be a bit arbitrary. Not that it's not being used, but I know that in other projects that I've been involved in, the success really hinges on a clear process where it can be tracked. Agencies have a clear understanding of how they can access services, so maybe you just...
Yeah, it's, right now, like, we've only been a year and a half. So we have Serena Kennedy out there right now, and that's who you contact if you want to go out for any type of programming. The Horse Therapy Program, which is... Tony, and that's all on their website.
So it's by the website then?
Yep, by the website. Yeah, you just make a call up. Right now, we're not doing a, we're doing land-based healing for our clients. We have a huge mental health team, and we have a lot of clients.
There's no forums or official documents or anything that has to be so?
No.
And how do you, how do you, kind of success do you have tracking? You said three to 400 youth?
Three to 400 youth, and they're coming from the schools.
And that's just for calls, or that's just...
No, they're coming from the schools. Yeah, the schools are bringing them in. So they're not necessarily youth that are suffering from mental illnesses or addictions or anything. It's just kids going to school, coming up, enjoying the camp.
Reason I ask is because you and I both know the importance of data and a process, established process. So there's no, you know, it's, there's no misunderstanding about how to access a service.
How to access it. We're hoping that a lot of the community partners will start getting involved. Unfortunately, when you make change and when you make, you know, people get a little jealous that you're growing so fast. And then it becomes almost like a competition, unfortunately. But you need to create those partnerships and relationships, like it's, we want more other agencies coming up and utilizing the property.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you, Joe.
No problem.
I mean, I had the pleasure of visiting the Strata property, was that maybe eight, nine months ago we were up there?
Yep.
And I know more activity has occurred. So I think it would be beneficial for all of council, maybe when the weather gets a little bit warmer. Maybe in spring or, you know, May or something, to, to visit again and see where you're at there. But I think it's a very important project, and I know there's been a lot of support around, like administration and the council table here for where you're at now. And I think, I hope that will continue as the future goes on, so.
I'd like to see, you know, more of the social services moving out of downtown and more into a place like the camp.
And I couldn't agree more, so. So anyways, thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Tika.
Thank you. And Joe, it's really nice to hear that update, because that's my family farm, like, I'm one of the Strata grandchildren. So it's really, and my son is headed out there to do the equine therapy program, is that what you mean? Really delightful to know that it's in such good hands and getting such good use. Good morning, everyone, Mayor Poirier, council, city managers, members of the gallery, press. It's really lovely to be back in this room again. I haven't been here since before the pandemic, and it's really nice to be with all of you. Welcome back, and congratulations to those who are new to the room. For those who don't know me, my name is Tika Newton. I was born and raised in Canora. I grew up here. I live with my husband, Mike, and our kids, Maya and Sam, who are there in that photo, at our off-grid property just east of town. We live with, on the same property where I grew up. It's my mom and dad's place. We live next door to my sister and my niece. Our family has really deep values around care for land and stewardship of land, water, people, and place. We care a lot about living things. I'm here today to talk to you about the area in which I work, which is climate change and sustainability. I'd like to give you some ideas to consider for your term ahead as leaders of our community. Anecdotally, I think we all notice when the weather's peculiar, or when environmental conditions feel off. Variable weather and environmental conditions have always existed, that's true. But what feels different today, I think, is not just the strangeness of rain or cross-country skiing in a tank top in January, or heat above 40 degrees in summer like we had in 2021, or immense floods or forest fires, but the frequency with which these things happen and have been happening in recent years, and the extreme variability from one season or year to the next. In order to assess whether we're right or wrong in feeling that the climate conditions are different now than when they were when I was a kid, we can look at the long-term environmental monitoring dataset from our neighbors just to the east at the Experimental Lakes area. The Experimental Lakes area is a world-renowned freshwater research facility, and today it's operated by the International Institute for Sustainable Development. I borrowed a couple of slides from my friend Scott Higgins, who's a prof at Lakehead and a researcher at ELA. And this one, I thought, was particularly noteworthy. For the last 10,000 years or so, geophysical data show that the annual average temperature in our region has been remarkably consistent from year to year. That only started to change in about 1850. Since 1969, ELA itself has measured and kept rather, records of weather, climate, and atmospheric chemistry data in its study lakes and reference lakes, and at a land-based weather station near the base campsite. Their record shows that in recent decades, year-to-year variability has been huge relative to the past 10,000 years. For the first 10 years of their dataset, from 1970 to 1980, you see variability in the temperatures, but it's mostly to the cooler side. When you hit the 1980s, though, the variability, it's, it's still really variable, but there is a trend toward increased warming that doesn't slow down. And since 2000, there have been more years that have been above average temperature than have been cooler. ELA scientists have also looked at monthly data, so this is average annual temperature data in this slide. But they've also looked at monthly climate data, and they've found that the most dramatic climate changes in our area actually have happened in the shoulder season. So not in winter or summer, but spring and fall. Spring tends to start earlier and fall runs later. Our winters are on average about a day, a day shorter per year over the last 40 years. So that adds up to being almost a full month more ice-free since the 1970s. This has major effects on plant growth. When you have more ice-free days, you have more time for plants to grow. And that impacts the entire food web, including fish. When there's no ice, plants, including algae, can grow. And so the algae season in 2022 is now far longer than it was 40 or 50 years ago. There's always been algae in the lake. It just lasts a lot longer now than it used to. ELA scientists have also found that as a result of regional lakes' warming over recent decades, cold-water fish like lake trout are showing a trend toward lower body size and smaller population sizes as a result of having less habitable area in the lakes as they warm. ELA scientists have projected that lake trout will likely be eradicated in and around Canora in the next 15 years because of climate warming. These data from ELA align with evidence worldwide. Our local trends are consistent with global climate change trends. Globally, climate scientists have documented that the Earth's global surface temperature has increased by about 1.1 degrees Celsius compared with the average from 1850 to 1900. Our current global surface temperature is higher than at any point in the last 125,000 years. 1.1 degrees Celsius is the worldwide average, but in northern regions, temperatures have risen faster. And around Canora, our average temperature has already increased by 2 to 3 degrees Celsius. So this is a slide from the Climate Atlas at the Prairie Climate Institute in Winnipeg. And you can toggle through this website, I included the link in the speaking notes, if you're interested. And you can see all the different projections for all the different temperature and weather conditions over the next, over this century. 1850, I mentioned a few minutes ago, I'll go back to it, is when this curve starts to rise. It's a noteworthy date because it marks the beginning of the Industrial Revolution, when Western society first started burning coal as part of the move from using human and animal labor to, as the primary source of energy that fueled the economy, to using oil and other fossil fuels. By the early 20th century, oil and natural gas had joined coal as cheap, plentiful, very concentrated sources of energy. And fossil fuels have, of course, since become the foundation of our modern global economy. Although fossil fuels bring us lots of undeniable benefits, they come with some very serious side effects. Not only are they extremely environmentally damaging to produce, but burning them releases gaseous pollutants like methane, carbon dioxide, and nitrous oxide, which have been accumulating in the atmosphere since 1850. These gases, so carbon dioxide, methane, nitrous oxide, and a few others that are refrigerants, the hydrofluorocarbons, act like, they, they're called greenhouse gases because they act like glass on a greenhouse trapping solar radiation in the atmosphere. Over time, these chemicals have accumulated in the atmosphere, and it takes millennia for them to get recycled back into the Earth's terrestrial and ocean systems. And so the greenhouse effect they're causing is leading to measurable warming of the Earth's atmosphere and oceans. While the temperature data show an overall warming trend over recent decades, I'm sure all of you are no doubt thinking about how cold it is outside right now and how miserable it was last winter, and that doesn't seem to square with global warming. It might seem a bit counterintuitive, but actually that's not at all inconsistent with climate change expectations. In order to understand what's happening locally, we actually have to zoom out and think of climate change as a global phenomenon. It's a planetary change that has disruptive local impacts. We need to look at the bigger scale than just our region to see how global warming is destabilizing the Earth's major atmospheric and oceanic currents and climate systems. As the atmosphere and oceans warm, water and air currents, such as the Jet Stream, which is shown here as that wavy line, the Jet Stream is the main west-to-east atmospheric current over Canada. These currents become less stable and more chaotic. It's similar to how you can think about a pot of water as it heats. You can see all the swirly pattern of the currents in the water as it, as it reaches a boil. A similar thing is happening in the atmosphere and in the oceans as these, these streams get disrupted. Last winter, the Jet Stream was weakened by warmer-than-usual air rising off of a warming Pacific Ocean. This meant that the usually powerful atmospheric current did a really poor job of holding the cold air up north. Instead, without a strong Jet Stream to keep the Arctic air in place, it washed down over us for most of the winter. And in fact, just this week, right now, we're having the same thing happen. Here's an illustration from November, the November 27th Weather Network forecast, and it shows that weakened Jet Stream that allows the polar vortex to descend on us. And so it's really cold here right now. While in Akaluit, or in Anuvik, which is up by Faribank, so way up north, it's about the same temperature there right now as it is here, but that's 20 degrees above seasonal norm for them, and it's 10 degrees below seasonal norm for us. Climate change is also to blame for the absurd amount of snow we had last year that nearly broke me trying to keep our road plowed all winter. And the reason for that is a warmer atmosphere holds more water. And so anytime it rains or snow is, it really comes down because there's just so much more volume of precipitation in the clouds. Another way that climate change is really hammering our region is through the disruption of our ability to regulate and manage water flows. And in my view, this is our region's biggest climate change challenge. It's the fact that we can no longer manage environmental systems because they no longer behave in consistent and predictable ways. One of the roles I play regionally involves the International Joint Commission, which is a binational institution that helps to manage waterways that are shared between Canada and the United States. One of our responsibilities is to regulate water levels on the Boundary Water System into Namak and Rainy Lakes, which then flow into Rainy River and on into Lake of the Woods. In the past, we've been able to manage water levels by opening or closing floodgates in the hydroelectric dams on those lakes. Water levels are managed to optimize navigation, electricity generation, ecological, and social values. And this water management system has persisted and worked really well for the past 100 years because we knew that each spring, when we got snow and ice melting, that was the year's biggest influx of water into the system, and we just needed to plan for it. In recent years, however, we've seen unprecedented drought that has tested managers' planning limits, and then huge random spring and summer rainfall events that have totally dwarfed the spring fresh out, delivering unfathomable amounts of water into the system and totally overwhelming anyone's ability to manage it. And that's what happened in 2022. Our water regulatory systems are not and cannot be designed to manage water that comes at us so unpredictably and at such high volume when it does come, or with such infrequency in drought years. Instead, we have to adapt our systems, our communities, and our individual lives to be more resilient so that we can withstand variability more than we did in the past. And so what are we going to do about all of these challenges and problems? In 2018, the city produced a community energy plan that looked at energy consumption and emission sources for the city's operations and the broader community level. Because Canora's largest economic activities in the past decade haven't been so heavily focused on industry, most of the energy use in Canora isn't around heavy industry, but around transportation and residential and commercial buildings, heating and cooling, and operations. And for the city, it's especially the rec center and water and wastewater treatment. The next couple of slides illustrate the city of Canora's main users of electricity and natural gas. You can see that wastewater and, and operations at the, at the rec center, heating and cooling of the ice surface and heating the pool use a lot of electricity and gas. And so consequently, this is what the mix of our GHG emissions as a city, like as the corporation of the city, looks like. A lot of it is fleet vehicles and transportation, but the, the ice surface and the pools also demand a lot in water and wastewater. At a residential level, lots, and commercially, lots of us live and work in older and drafty buildings that weren't designed with energy efficiency in mind. Energy inefficiency is expensive, so improving building's efficiency is an excellent long-term savings measure. Efficiency can be improved by improving insulation and stopping up leaks in a building envelope. And the more efficiently a building operates, the less energy that goes into it. If that energy is from fossil fuel sources, improving efficiency also reduces emissions. Even better, you can switch from heating buildings with gas furnaces to using electric air-to-air heat pumps to heat in winter and cool in summer. It's a great way to save money over the long term, and it drops your building's emissions to almost zero. Adding net-zero technologies such as solar thermal heating or district heat pump systems to the city's operations of the rec center and water and wastewater treatment plants, though costly upfront, would dramatically lower the city of Canora's emissions profile and long-term energy costs while reducing energy price volatility. Many of these improvements the city can do as showcase pieces to help spur residential homeowners, landlords, and private businesses to undertake similar improvements to their properties. Municipal building bylaws and incentive programs can also be tools to support action. And then in addition to the community energy plan, last year, the city also finalized its Sustainability Action Plan, which review as a companion plan to the CEP, which is sort of a more strategic orientation. The Sustainability Action Plan includes a lot of really good accessible background information. I encourage you to read it. And it lays out 14 priority projects that could help the community to enhance its climate, environmental, social, and economic sustainability. Some of these projects are intended to be championed by citizen groups, in some cases perhaps private businesses or other public partners. And many will need some level of involvement, coordination, and financial commitment from the municipal government working alongside indigenous, federal, and provincial counterparts. The Sustainability Advisory Committee is tasked with helping council to move forward on implementation of this plan and overseeing the work that's recommended in it. And I'm really excited to see what we can accomplish together in the coming years. I'll be sitting on that, that committee for this term. Even for matters that aren't strictly within municipal jurisdiction, council can play a constructive role in helping to communicate with citizens about the benefits of taking climate action and the programs and opportunities available to local residents. The steps that people should consider to increase their resilience and decrease their personal and community risk. And so I'll just flip through these, but you can read the report, and they're all in there too. So wrapping up, we live in a time of massive ecological and social change. We live in fearful times. War is raging, and political turmoil affects so many parts of the world. Many people are hurting, not just around the world or across Canada, but right here in our own community, and likely here, some of us in this room. Inflation, which is largely driven by the volatility of fossil fuel energy, is making life really costly for all of us, and especially those on the lowest ends of the income spectrum. I think many in the community are feeling the pinch particularly keenly right now with the holidays almost upon us because it's a pretty daunting prospect to have to choose between heat, food, transportation, and still find ways to foster seasonal cheer when you have little or no money to spare. As a council in 2022, you all face a real... As a council in 2022, you all face a really big task to lead with compassion, thoughtfulness, and care, not just for Canora's present, but also our future. In a world that's getting smaller and more vulnerable and chaotic, I encourage you all to always be informed and aware citizens, not just of this town, but of your global community. Think about how you can best ensure the people of this community are made as secure as possible while still preserving a high quality of life for everyone. And think about how all our efforts here in Canora tie into the experiences of others all around us. There are helping hands and minds in many, many places, and we have lots to offer our neighbors, too. The number one thing that will see us through crisis is our connection to others, and this above all else, I believe, is your task this term. Build the genuine connections among local people that will help us to solve problems together and will help us to be in relationship with others. Because when we're in relationship with other people, we're accountable to them, and we also find in them our spark and our passion to contribute and be part of something that's useful and meaningful. So thanks for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions or go for coffee anytime and talk about this stuff because, yeah, it's my bread and butter.
Thanks, Tika. Just before I forget, is it possible for you to flip your presentation to the city?
Yeah, I did. I shared it all with Heather, so she's got a copy of everything.
Pardon? Oh, okay. I hadn't seen it yet.
Yeah, I saw it yesterday. So you have a more in-depth written report that's got all the links to all of the resources in it.
Okay, sorry about that. Thank you very much. Any questions at council? No? Okay. Well, thank you very much, Tika.
Yep.
Okay, moving on the agenda. Next is Susan Evidin, and it's Nishnabi Park contract extension. Is that the one you would like to start with?
Yes, that would be.
Okay. And then you just want to continue on with your next on the agenda also?
Perfect. Okay, thank you. I'm one of the operators in Nishnabi Park. I work in partnership with Middle Lake Enterprises, and that is David Launch. David Launch would be here, but he and his son Ryan are currently motorcycling through Nepal, so he's not. According to our contract, it's a five-year contract with an optional two-year extension. It is Section 2A of the Terms of Agreement between the City of Canora and Middle Lake Enterprises. So we would like to exercise that two-year extension. Ideally, if we could exercise a 10-year extension, we'd be happy to do that. We have long-term goals at Nishnabi Park, and we're accomplishing them. So I'll just go through some of the things we've done in the four years that we've been operating the park. The extension would be from 2023, is our final year in five years, so it would be beyond that. So we believe that as park operators, we have a real obligation to our campers to give them the best possible experience. We also believe we have a responsibility to the city of Canora, to the residents of Canora, to manage this park and bring in revenue for the whole town. So as a result, we have, over the four years that we've been in operation, we've invested $80,000 in park improvements, $20,000 a year on average, and there's a list of them in the documents that I sent. And that is as reported to Revenue Canada. It does not include the labor that David Launch and Middle Lake has done that is not considered billable, like we don't bill it. He's just there working, and he's done those projects. Our campers positively report on their camping experience due to the changes that we've made. Some of them, we've replaced the sewage facility, the dumping facility, with a modern, clean, hygienic facility. We've upgraded camp sites. We've improved electrical hookups in some. Nishnabi Park receives a large number of international travelers and Canadians who have limited, I'm nervous, sorry. So I'm a bit shaky here, who have limiting English skills. So we encourage our staff to utilize their French skills with our campers. As a result, I have been studying French for three years, and I can now engage in some conversational. It's fun to watch me interacting, you know, with French-speaking people and how we manage to get their pidgin English and my pidgin French to work. So it's been a really a good experience. We consistently manage the gate hours, and we also have installed an electronic gate, an electric gate that operates on the timer. And that enforcement of the gate hours and the enforcement of the bylaw 27207 has resulted in a quiet setting. I included in my presentation letters of reference from our campers on some of the improvements we've made. The quiet setting, the non-party atmosphere of Nishnabi Park, has been positively reported on. It is a family campground. We've encouraged that, and both the neighbors around us across the bay have reported on how nice it is that the park is quiet. For many of our campers, most of our campers, Nishnabi Park is a vacation destination. They are coming here to spend their vacation dollars. We're not a road to someplace. We are someplace, and we recognize that, and we recognize that our local business owners depend on Nishnabi Park. They depend on the tourists that we bring in and our good management of the park. If we can't get people to come, they're not going to spend their money here, and it's imperative that we take this responsibility seriously. In 2019, we implemented a consistent and fairly managed online reservation system, and it has resulted in full occupancy of our RV sites from July through September. Our campers have noted, had told us in the previous systems, difficulty with not doing things online, that there was oftentimes, it would show that they were fully, the park was fully occupied, but in practice, they'd be sitting there, and there were empty campsites around them. Part of that is the result of our deposit system. Initially, they didn't like the deposit system, but now that they see that they can actually get a campsite because the campsite isn't vacant, that the deposit system is working. So they all support that now. By carefully managing the reservation system, we've eliminated empty campsites. We are full. Our occupancy rates year over year, and this includes our tent sites, so it's not 100% occupancy. In 2019, the year we took over, our occupancy rate was 76.4%. I need to note, in that year, I had called everybody who held a reservation under the previous system to get them to put a deposit down. That resulted in 600 campsite days being freed up because people said, "Oh, I didn't realize I had a reservation then. No, no, I don't even have vacation then. Oh, I sold my trailer. I'm not coming." But all of those were reservations that were held within the system, and with no money down, people don't even think of it. So by adding the deposit system, that changed. So 2019 was 76.4, 2020 was 82.2, 2021, 88.4, 2022, 89.8. All of this during COVID years. So we're really proud of what we've accomplished there. We're committed to growth. We're committed to the ongoing improvements of Nishnabi Park. We don't view this as the city's property that you guys invest in, and we reap the financial rewards. We came in at a higher bid than what the city was asking initially. We were very clear on our plans, summer and winter, for the park, and we believe that we have a responsibility to put into the park. It's our business. It only succeeds for you if it succeeds for us, and that means we have to invest, and that's why we've done so. We're requesting the optional two years as per the contract. From a business standpoint, we have a 10-year goal in the park. It is a problem at this point because the projects we would like to do, the upgrades we would like to make, the landscaping improvements we pay for out of pocket, if we don't have years to recoup that money, it impacts our ability to invest. So the next two years, we'll be very cautious. You know, if we get this extension, we'll be very cautious in what we do. Whereas if we knew that we had the park for 10 years, there's so much we can do, you know, and there is, we view that as our responsibility. We're making money from this park. We feel we need to give it back, but we can only give it back if we know that we have the opportunity for returns. Some of the things we've done, and in the report, it's year over year, like each year what we've done, but we have improved the, done renovations in the store. Some of them were paid for by the city of Canora. Most of them were paid by us. Completely overhauled, every year, we overhaul the internet system. Every year, we overhaul the security. That's just an ongoing. We purchased a $10,000 goose fecal scooper. Whoever thought I'd ever even know that those exist? We've repaired the bathroom doors repeatedly. It's an ongoing problem, but we were having the first year campers locked in the bathroom. One gentleman from Switzerland was locked in the bathroom for 30 minutes because of faulty locking mechanisms. We installed the play oven. The winter croc curl rings have been really successful, not as successful as we'd like, but there have been two years of COVID winters, so we couldn't do the things that we had hoped for. We've improved the basement. We completely renovated the fish cleaning house with a stainless steel cleaning surface. We also, the fish cleaning house was draining all the fluid directly onto the ground. It was not in the sewer system. We installed all the appropriate lines for that, and in doing so, that allowed us to increase service, full-service sites to four full-service sites now were added to the system, sites that were just upgraded because the sewer lines were run. We have upgraded, we now have three 50-amp service sites. There were none prior. We've increased an extra 30-amp full-service site as well in 2021 and two more in 22. And the full list is there of what we've done. What we're working on right now is our winter lights project. I don't know if you saw it on Facebook page. We've actually got our first winter light project up, which was all items that we outlined in, that we bid, when we bid, that we put in, that we would do. And we have done those things, and we would like to do more. And in doing so, in order to do that, we do need the two-year extension. Ideally, if council would consider relooking at the contract and making it a 10-year extension with the option of provision for exit, if either party's unhappy, we would be supportive of that, too. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Any questions at council?
Just a point of clarification from an administrative standpoint. Council makes the decision to enter into contracts. Contract administration is firmly in city administrations.
Yes, yeah.
Per view, so just want to be clear on that.
Oh, you're okay? Okay. Counselor Burnham.
Thanks for your presentation, Susan. You mentioned that you consistently manage gate hours. What other things have you put in place? Do you manage your hours, your time hours? And that being said, how many have you ever had to call police for?
Oh, yes.
Calls, and do you have numbers?
Numbers, we don't. I can tell you roughly what happens to, I live on-site all summer long, I should say that. I have a lovely lakefront home on Middle Lake, but I live in my trailer in Nishnabi Park all summer long. And I am, the system that we have in place for the campers is text me, follow up with a phone call. The text won't wake me up. So, and they're very good at it for the most part. So I have gone out, either myself, David's, his trailer's on the other side of the park. He's there on the weekends. I'm there 24/7, well, not 24/7, I work during the day. And so, yes, we do get, we have had to call the police. The gate is now much better because there's a keypad. They just enter the keypad, the gate opens, and they can come in. I can override it if I had to for any reason. So I have called on average, I'd say the first year, probably maybe four calls to police, you know, last year was two. So it's generally speaking, you know, I'm a mom, right? Honey, granny. I show up and I say, "Okay, guys, it's time to shut this down." And I don't disappear. I've had some lovely nights where I'm sitting at a picnic table two nights over, waiting for the children to go to bed, you know? And generally, they do. Now, having said that, the reservation system also, the way we implement that, we are discouraging weekend partiers, people who want to come for the weekend party. The system is tiered in such a way that longer-term stays get first dibs, families that are coming for week-long vacations get the next stab at it, and we open for weekend reservations. Like, we've done those reservations already. November 15th is longer than 10 days. November 17th is greater than five nights. It should be greater than four nights. And then on February 1st, it opens for all. So that allows families the opportunity to know when their vacation is next year and get their vacation time in. And then it opens up for everybody who's weekend, and then, you know, they fill it up. And that limits the number of people who are just, you know, crashing for the long weekends and here to party, you know?
So the nature of those calls would be just, can people, ask the people or?
Last year, drug use late at night, problematic behavior. The officer was wonderful, you know, very helpful. The second one last year.
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
So it was only two calls, that's right?
Yeah, yeah, that's no, it's, the campers are really good, you know, but I think partly is it has become a family place, you know? I will go visit somebody, if I see a group that I think is going to be a problem, I'll just go have a chat with them, you know? I have, if I've seen in the reservation system, oh, I can tell this is a party group coming, you know, I might remind them to review, you know, our noise policy in the city's bylaw, you know? That 272007, it's in our park information. So, yeah.
Any other questions at council? Okay. Thank you, Susan. So did you want to continue on with your next item?
Okay.
Which is the Old Shaoli Lane closure?
Okay, and I realize that this is a more contentious issue. So when we bid, before we bid on the park operation, we found the Beaches, Parks, and Trails Development Project, City of Canora, 2016 report. And that was instrumental in A, in our bidding, and B, how we bid and our plans. And in that, specifically, they recommend the closure of Old Shaoli Lane. And so they also recommended the gate hours and winter camping and many other four-season activities at the park. So with that in mind, we believe we provide a location for the residents of Canora and tourists who are not fortunate enough to live on lakefront property and allows them to enjoy their outdoor experience. Presence of motor vehicles and motor traffic through the park interferes with the safe enjoyment of the grounds to pedestrians and winter sports enthusiasts. And regardless of signage, we have found that vehicles exceed the posted speed limit. In our original bid to operate Nishnabi Park, we addressed our plan to pursue the park as a winter venue for winter camping and also to provide the safe usage for residents of Canora. We are ready to proceed, are ready to proceed with this, for this, for this year, as noted in the addendum, but we can't really move forward on those projects if we're not able to provide a winter venue that reflects the unique experience separate from urban traffic. You can't have a winter camping venue with cars driving right past the trailers. It just doesn't have that wilderness experience. Before the COVID shutdowns, we'd applied for a liquor license. Our plans had been to have a food venue at the park store that would offer hot chocolate, light food, hot dogs, hamburgers, and beer for limited hours for the snow machine traffic for Sunset Country Trail Riders that travel through the east side of the park, and also for walkers and people who might snowshoe, ski, those items within the park. COVID lockdown changed any thoughts of it being a successful business venture. There wasn't clearly no money to be made in a bar during COVID. And it wasn't, the bar operations was going to be like Friday, Saturday, four to eight type thing, you know? Very limited because obviously, until we've got a core audience, we can't invest, you know, staffing dollars in that. Also listed in our original bid was the creation, I'm calling it Winter Lights. It's really an unimaginative name. It's done in many other communities. I think they call it Candy Cane Lane in Winnipeg. I first saw it in the campgrounds in Saskatoon. And basically, there's power at all these sites, and you can set up a Christmas display at these sites. And the way it worked, the Saskatoon one I went to, is that for Christmas week, they plow the roads and the cars drive through these wonderful Christmas displays, and it costs $10 to do that, and the $10 is donated to charity. We wanted to take it further and have it a walking trail, so that people go out in the evening, there's these lovely displays of lights, and so the whole winter season, hence the winter lights idea. And then we would do the same, plow it, at Christmas week, and allow for traffic to go through. That all has been put on hold largely because, previous to this, and largely because it's a contentious issue, previous council has done it year over year. We'll close it for this year, but not next, right? We'll have to do it each year. I can't go to a business and say, "Will you invest money in this project?" if I can't guarantee that their advertising dollars are well spent. If it's one year, they're not going to, I'm not going to get the support. We decided regardless that we would go ahead with our first display this year, and because it's cold, it's got to be done now, right? So we put our first lights display up. It's a personal passion of mine. I am a cyclist, and it's Wounded Warriors of Canada. It's for veterans, first responders, and their families who suffer with PTSD, and that's the charity of choice. It's two cyclists riding through the park. It's very cool. Small, it's not glamorous yet. Nobody's going to, you know, be. Small, it's not glamorous yet, nobody's going to, you know, be quoting us in some tourist magazine, but, but we have started and we want to continue starting, continue with that. But we, we need the assurance that I can go to advertisers and say, would you put this display together? Yes, you can do this every year, and we can build on it. I mean, right now, ours is just two bikes with lights on them. But these displays have, you know, wheels moving, Santa's elves flying through the air, I mean, wonderful things that other communities have done, and we would like to see that here, too. We have purchased four trailers, two of them are small boulder-type trailers, they're small enough for winter camping. Two are not operational yet, two are on-site and could be utilized for winter camping. And we do have a plan for how we would handle bathrooms in a place that has no water in the winter. Obviously, this is not tourism that you're going to take Granny to. This is the adventures, adventure tourist who's going to want to do this, maybe go ice fishing, come back and enjoy, you know, a little bit of warmth in a tiny little trailer. Those are ready to go, but again, we can't advertise that if we, if we're always dealing with whether Old Chalet Lane is going to be opened or closed. There is, in my opinion, little functional use to Old Chalet being opened, other than it provides a few homes quicker access to the businesses on McKenna Way and Highway 17, and that difference is approximately 300 meters. At the time, at the time that we first started this process, we verified with emergency services that they wouldn't opt for Old Chalet Lane as an approach for emergency access to residents because the status is inconsistent throughout the year. We also recognize that there are many, many dead-end roads throughout this town. So making it a dead-end road is not unique. It doesn't provide those residents with any more risk than anyone else living on a dead-end road. So we have tried, we were instructed from the beginning to work with the residents as much as possible on this, and we believe we have. We have, the barricade at Old Chalet Lane in the park during the summer, we have adjusted the opening of it to permit a golf cart through, so the son of one of the residents can safely access the golf course through the park. We've had lots of little conversations with him, he's learning to be a more responsible driver, and he was really good this past year. But that motor vehicle, we've adjusted that to allow for that. It's also large enough to allow quads to go through, and we do speak with quad people who are driving through all through the year, advising them of safe traveling. We made, have just recently made an agreement with another neighbor who's plowing the path through there, so pedestrians can walk there, and in exchange, he carries on and goes to Tim Cornes, has coffee with his friends. And so we believe that that was working to meet his needs. We had a conversation with another neighbor, one of the properties is adjacent to the park and has an unofficial driveway that comes into Camp Site 59 specifically through, well, right beside the campsite. And we have, we were, he came and approached us, and so we landscaped it such that he would be able to drive construction vehicles, as was his request, through on an as-needed basis. Now, the reason we had to modify Site 59 is when the park was designed, the campers didn't have slide-outs. Now there are slide-outs, and if you're camping in Site 59, the way it was up until this October, and you had a campfire and Camp 60 had a slide-out, the fire is right here by the edge of the slide-out. This made the people who are in 60 and have their $100,000 camper sitting there very at risk of fire, and the person in for Site 59 feeling like they couldn't have a fire. So we just landscaped it by shifting it over a little bit into this driveway that is an unofficial driveway, so that they have a little bit more room. Then we, when we were approached by Mr. Barclay about how that impacted him, we let, had our, the heavy equipment operator adjust the surface so that he would still be able to get the construction vehicles in and out. We've had the support of both council and the Canora staff on this project. Bylaw 167-2021 has been in place, you know, for the closure. So we've had the support of the city and council. Nishnabi Park is a green space for public enjoyment. It is our position that there are many opportunities for increased physical and mental health benefits by the use of outdoor spaces. I am fortunately living proof that there is, that there is no safe way you can have pedestrians in the same place as motor vehicles. Sorry, this gets a little emotional. I've been adjusting my hearing aids for this entire meeting. I had perfectly good hearing until I was struck by a quad in the park that shouldn't have been there. I, you know, I suffer with vertigo, even though I'm a bike rider, I have long-term problems as a result of this. There is no way you can have pedestrians safely interacting with motor vehicle traffic. It just, you know, it doesn't exist. And we believe that Nishnabi Park is for everybody. It is not just for people who can afford to stay there. It is a resource for the people in town who don't live on Lake of Woods, who don't live on Middle Lake. It allows them to experience the outdoors in a safe way. And when you add vehicle traffic to that, you take away that safety. We believe that it should be a legacy for generations to come. It should be a safe family place. While we've, through all of this, the COVID years and whatnot, we had, the things that we have done is, I think, we've increased walkers to the park, we've increased family usage, we've had, have sliding, you can purchase a sliding picnic basket and go sliding, and there's a fireplace cleared for you. We're working on the winter camping. But I think the thing that I find most, that my biggest accomplishment, and it's only by default that it's mine, is that through all of COVID, the scouts and the beavers met every week at Nishnabi Park. They played in the forests, they did their activities, and they continued, and they could do it safely. You know, there was no concern about, oh, but the traffic light doesn't actually reach that spot, and so that child is at risk. They weren't ever at risk. And it's our hope that the people of Canora can continue to enjoy what those of us who are fortunate to have lakefront property get to enjoy all the time. Oh, I'm done, sorry.
Okay, thanks, Susan. Any questions, any questions of council? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will take that information back with us, so, thanks. Moving up on the agenda, Dean Barclay, same item, Old Chalet Lane closure. Welcome.
Thank you. Just introduce myself, I'm Dean Barclay, and I live at 505 Old Chalet Lane, so I'm probably most impacted by the opening and closure of the park road, like of Chalet Lane into Nishnabi Park. And my property, I'll just give you just a brief history of our property. We purchased it in 2020 from the Hooks, Jim Hook and his wife, Marge. We took possession in the summer. The Hooks built that house in 1974, and prior to the Hooks, the Stone family lived there or had a cottage there. And we had a side driveway, or we still do, a side driveway into Nishnabi Park, and that's been used since, prior to 1974. So it's been used for a long time, over 50 years. And we would like that side driveway to make, we'd like to maintain it still because we feel it's necessary for emergency services. Because our driveway is very steep down to our house, and I believe that a fire truck or an ambulance would be able to get in and out of our driveway, so. So prior to us purchasing the house, the city maintained the Old Chalet Lane into the park, and they also maintained a road to our side driveway. So we would like that back open. So we're proposing to have that open all winter and to plow to our side driveway like they had for the previous 50 years. So during the 50 years that the Hooks lived there, it was proposed once by the city that they close that side driveway. It was believed at the time that they could get a court order to maintain it as an easement of necessity. It didn't come to that. Then, city manager Rick Perchuk proposed with the homeowners possibly building a road from the west, or the east side of our house up to Old Chalet Lane, and that was kind of abandoned when they agreed to keep the road open, so. That side driveway, recently, the park management decided to expand into it. They blocked the entire roadway with a new campsite, or not a new, just a new driveway and with a sign in the middle of it. So I did speak to park manager, they moved the sign, and they did make it a little more of a gradual incline up there, so I could get an emergency vehicle in and out in the summertime, but without that park open, I won't be able to have any kind of emergency services to our house. And just to discuss the whole opening of the park, of Chalet Lane, I walk through there every day and I don't see any activity in the wintertime at all. And it's not properly maintained for the amount of walkers that go through there, because a lot of people walk by our house into the park, and I don't think it's properly maintained just by one resident who does it on his own, but he can't be relied on to do it. And with, I mean, I didn't have to call the ambulance last year, the year before, but I do have elderly parents, my wife has elderly parents, and we would like the option of having emergency services into our driveway. And, yeah, like there might be some activity in the wintertime in the park, but I haven't seen it, and I do walk through there every day. There might, there's a little, I've seen a little tiny bit, I've seen people sitting around inside the clubhouse, but as far as actual activities, very, very little. So I don't think it is proportionate to keeping the road closed all, all winter. And, yeah, I think that's all I would say about it. So my proposal is to keep the road open and to maintain into the park to our side driveway.
Okay, thanks, Dean. Any question, Council, want to speak?
Hi, Dean.
Hi.
So if I'm, I'm looking at the overhead map now, and you're saying that the driveway into the park is to the east of your home?
Well, yeah, there is, no, like we have a driveway from Old Chalet Lane, yeah, down to our house, but it's a very steep driveway.
Yes.
And I maintain it, I sand it, I plow it, but if it's just snowed or whatever, it's super, super slippery, and it'd be really difficult to even get a four-by-four truck up there. So what I'm saying is that if we have the need for ambulance or fire truck, like they're not going to be able, they might be able to get down, but they definitely wouldn't be able to get up without that access through the park that we've had for the last 50, over 50 years.
So the access, that's what I'm asking you.
Yeah.
It goes beside your house to the park and then off through the park?
Yeah, and when I purchased the house, that was always maintained by the city, and then we maintained the little side driveway, of course, into the park, but then the city maintained the road up to our side driveway.
And that's through, it looks, appears to be through a wooded law?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Council, Bernie?
Thanks for your words, Dean. Just wondering what, if you're comfortable in sharing what you pay for property taxes?
I don't know offhand, but I would say eight or $9,000.
Okay.
Yeah, so we pay a fair amount of property tax.
Any other questions of council? Thanks very much, Dean. Thank you very much. Okay. Item number E reports corporate services, so we have a couple of items. Item 1-1, 2023 council meeting calendar adoption of procedural bylaw. Heather, are you going to speak to this?
Thank you, Mary Poirier. So annually, the clerk will submit the 2020, or the upcoming council meeting calendar, and that is at the council's discretion and establishing the next year's calendar for council meetings. So we've had preliminary discussion just on the council meeting dates and times, and council has proposed moving to Wednesday meetings. So council would meet on Wednesdays, committee the whole at nine o'clock, and the second Tuesday, and the third Tuesday, we would meet Wednesday at five o'clock for council. That is what's been proposed in the attached calendar, as well as amendments to the procedural bylaw to reflect those changes. So it is now for council discussion in any direction.
Put it up to any council members? I know we've had a thorough discussion about this to this point, so, but if the council has.
Absolutely works for me.
Two thumbs up. Any other questions? So this will, this will come forward then at our December 2013 as a recommendation. Okay. Thank you. Moving on, 1.2, public notices bylaw amendment. Again, Heather?
Sure. So this is our legal, you'll see on the agenda often, you know, public notices bylaw, so those are the legal requirements where we must provide public notice. There is the discretion of the clerk also to provide further public notice on items that are of interest to the public, that we feel that, you know, we should probably give public notice about that. And there's also all of our other advertising and things that go outside of the public notice. This bylaw deals specifically with the legal requirements and the different pieces of legislation where we must give public notice on the official council agendas. So the, as you can see, the last time we did a revision was 2007. There's been a few pieces of legislation that, legislation that have changed since then. So this bylaw is before you now to adopt and ensure we are current with the existing legislation requirements.
Any, thank you. Any questions, Council? Thank you. Moving on the agenda, item 1.3, conventional transit contract extension. Oh, that's you again, Heather.
Yeah, thank you, Mary Poirier. So the conventional transit system, again, is a longstanding service that the city has provided since 1934, and the current conventional busing model has been in operation for a very long time. It is a city bus, city-owned bus, but it is contracted out to a service provider for the operation. So the city does not operate the bus, but the city does own the bus. The current contract with First Student Transit Canada does expire December 31st, 2022, and under this agreement, we either need to extend the agreement or the operation would cease as of December 31st unless there was a month-to-month arrangement. We have been reviewing our transit ridership for quite some time, so it is a budget item. It's a, it's a heavily subsidized item, and it is required review. So city staff have done a lot of work with the transit schedules. We've, we've invested, council's invested in, you know, new shelters, we've invested in further advertisement, publications, changing routes multiple times, and ridership continues to decline. So we had, there was some funding opportunity that came available for a microtransit feasibility study. We applied for that funding, we were successful. The intent now is to work with a contractor, a consultant, to do a review and to provide council with the recommendation on what the best route is moving forward for our conventional transit. So in the meantime, while that study and review is being conducted, we need to decide whether we want to continue with the conventional, conventional transit operation, and if so, the contractor has asked for a one-year extension to continue operation. So they need to know what the requirements are for them moving forward rather than a month-to-month type of operation. Staffing is very, very challenging. You will see on a regular basis where, you know, bus routes are canceled, and that is always driven by, 99% of the time, driven by staff shortages. So everyone is facing the same thing. Bus driving is a specialized license, it is specialized training, you can't just put somebody that is doing another type of business, the mechanic can't go and drive the bus. So there are often staff shortages which impact service levels. Again, that will all be part of the review when we go through this microtransit review. So this report is covering simply the extension to the contract that currently exists to continue operation for one more year.
Thank you. Heather, any questions, Council? Council, then.
To your workshop, so just to clarify, the budget of revenue for 2022 was $2,000, and we may, and the current revenues are $48,000, and they are looking at a 6.5% operating cost increase. Do we have a breakdown of what those operating costs are going to be?
Well, I can tell you how much the, you know, the contract agreement is. So the budget, hit to the budget's about $350,000. So you can take the revenues and the rest of it goes to the contract. There are some internal charges there. Our mechanics do support them to a certain extent. They don't maintenance the vehicle, that is for the buses, that is part of the contract with First Student, but there is a bit of support that is allocated for mechanics wages, and then there's some internal, so we rolled all. And then there's some internal, um, so we roll all their point. So that staffing support is allocated to that budget. Uh, we do the printing of the, uh, transit brochures, so that is allocated to that budget. So the actual operation contract is about three nineteen and the rest of us, the rest of that balance of that operating budget is coming from staff. It is a costly, um, service.
Yeah.
Uh, councilor?
And they haven't asked for an increase?
Six-point-five percent.
Yeah.
For twenty twenty-three, yes, for the one-year extension.
Okay, no other questions? Okay, uh, thank you. So that'll come forth, again, as a recommendation, uh, to the December twentieth meeting. Um, so moving on the agenda, so I just want to remind council that the, the next two items, um, just be careful in the questions you ask in open session. Uh, they, uh, there will be a fulsome discussion in camera. Uh, well, I'm just reminding everybody in that because we, we want to be asking questions that should, uh, be appropriate in camera if it relates to individuals. Uh, and you know the four or five different, uh, sections there. So, um, just think about the questions you want to ask in the public and, uh, there'll be an opportunity in the closed session later on in the day to ask, uh, more specific questions. So thank you. So moving on to item four-point-one, city QB joint gender neutral job evaluation. So I'll hand it over to our HR director, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Mayor Council. Uh, the purpose of this report is really an information report. Um, as part of, uh, our partnership with QB local five, or Local One-Nine-One, uh, we have entered into, uh, a joint gender neutral job evaluation. And this is a shared commitment, uh, to continue, uh, to maintain pay equity, uh, across our organization for QB membership. Um, the Pay Equity Act is legislation, it was enacted in nineteen eighty-seven, and the purpose of that act is really to redress systematic sex-based wage discrimination in Ontario workplaces. Uh, this act applies to all public sector and private, and all private sector employers with more than, employers with more than ten employees. Um, and it really requires assessment of all, all jobs to ensure that there's unbiased comparison and that wages are equal for equal work. Um, this is not the first time, the city of Canora has, uh, and QB One-Nine-One have engaged in this process in two thousand and eleven. Uh, very extensive job evaluation was done and pay equity was achieved. Uh, the parties have renewed our terms of, uh, reference, uh, that will guide and support the process. And a joint job evaluation committee has been established. And that joint job evaluation, uh, committee consists of three, um, city representatives and three union representatives. So together, uh, we don't sit on opposing sides, we sit together to manage the process and work through. Uh, it's important to note that job evaluation is not about adjusting wages. Job evaluation is really about rating the context and the job. Um, it's not the performance of the incumbents, it's not based on what the incumbent brings to the job, it's really the job itself. Uh, those jobs are graded against each other and really, uh, form a hierarchy in terms of our existing wage structure. So there are, um, uh, mandate, there's a mandate for the committee, uh, which is established in the QB, uh, gender neutral job evaluation plan, uh, which I will say we are using, uh, the QB plan. This is a nationally recognized best practice, so, uh, you know, there's no need for us to adjust or to do anything different, it is a well-established program. Uh, that mandate really ensures that we evaluate all jobs against the same criteria, which are, which ensures, uh, gender neutrality, that we, um, maintain the integrity of the program in terms of being able to, uh, engage in questionnaires. So all employees, uh, that are a part of QB membership will receive an opportunity to participate. It's good engagement for them to talk about their work and to explore any changes to the jobs that may have happened. Um, through that, we do, uh, we then take the information back and our leaders of those positions take a look and review and either, um, uh, support or add to it uh, or make adjustments as necessary. And then from there, it's called sore thumbing, we kind of take a look at all of the positions that have come back in and make sure, uh, if we see any anomalies, that we have some engaged conversation. The joint job evaluation process and timeline is included in the report. Uh, joint communication right now is just being worked on, that will be issued shortly to, uh, our, our QB, uh, membership. Uh, we anticipate that the complete review happens June of, uh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, just a reminder, we will be heading into bargaining in December of twenty twenty-three, so it's a really important process to ensure that we have a good understanding. Um, while there's no budgetary impacts, um, uh, expected, uh, it is, or pay equity issues expected. There could be if we identified that we have fallen, um, we've slipped in a couple of areas, we would be legally required to address those. Um, so any, uh, budgetary impact stemming from those types of identifications would be, um, immaterial in terms of larger scope. Uh, it would really be about slight adjustment to, uh, those types of classifications. Although that's a low risk, it, it does, there could be an impact. Uh, we do have a moderate, uh, just strategic risk around, um, you know, this type of work. Uh, we want to make sure that, uh, we are compliant with legislation. We want to make sure that, uh, our employees are engaged in providing this process. Um, and we understand that as we start to head into bargaining, that this information will be considered at the table. Uh, I think that's pretty much everything for that report.
Um, any questions of council, of Roberta? Oh, Councilor Redbill?
Thank you, your worship. Just to clarify, the, I understand that this is just reviewing the jobs specifically. This will not address that the pay equity adjustments that were done in two thousand and eleven haven't really been, uh, um, adjusted since then, correct?
Pay equity was achieved.
Yeah.
And so all of the adjustments were made at that point in, in time.
Mm-hmm.
Because we, we have no, uh, we have not entered in through the life of bargaining into classification adjustment, um, that's why I was saying, you know, the likelihood of pay equity slipping is fairly low because a consistent, uh, percentage has been applied. Uh, the one thing that might change is if job duties have significantly changed. So that's why, you know, we always caution that there could be that.
Sorry, thank you, can I follow, just follow up to that? Because I was reading on our corporate good, business review on how to identify and fix pay equity. So this is just a direct quote from them. And that pay, pay gaps start to reemerge as organizations experience employee turnover, um, reorganization, changes in job duties and subjective biases. So it's best practice to do spot checks annually with a deep dive every few years.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, any other questions of council? Uh, Roberta, uh, before you go on to your next item though, uh, we're gonna cycle back to deputations because there was a misunderstanding, there was another individual who wanted to speak on one of the topics. So sorry about that, Michael. Uh, do you wanna, um, go to the podium? And, uh, um, you have fifteen minutes, so.
Okay, I won't take that long. Hey, hi, my name's Michael Barclay. Uh, I'm also a resident of Old Shalley Lane, I live right beside my brother Dean. Uh, I live at five oh one Old Shalley Lane. Uh, I've been there for just over ten years. And in that time, we've always been very fond of the park and in no way do we ever want to, uh, do anything that would stop the business or any endeavor that the park, uh, people are trying to make in, any current business or anything like that. Um, I've always been there with, uh, previous, uh, operators of the park, uh, whether it be Scott Green or the period of people before that. We walk through that park, uh, almost every single day, there's a member of my family and Dean's family that go through that park every day. We love it dearly. I can say a living on Old Shalley Lane, there is people that walk through that park every single day, like numerous, numerous peoples, uh, people, and it's a great way to walk, it's just a, it's a nice tra- uh, trail. I understand it's also part of the Canora urban trail system, uh, which is there, uh, for not just foot traffic, it's there for skidoo traffic, ATV's, everything, it's about accessibility. In the last few years, um, I, I don't, I'm not here to bash Susan or Dave launch. Um, I think they did a great job in keeping things quiet and in order there. But there has been definite efforts made to stop even foot traffic from going through that park on that trail system. They're not going everywhere, they are going through there, past the bathrooms, towards the road and back towards McCannaway entrance. Um, they've had the blockades completely blocked so that people couldn't even walk through there. There was efforts made so that it was just wide enough to walk through there. Um, had to make phone calls and to get it widened. One of the neighbors right now, uh, takes his ATV, his own fuel, his own time. He has to try and like snowplow a walkway through there to make it safe for people to even walk. We live on a road that, I'm like one of the youngest person, people there that live on that road. They all go through there, last winter, it was awful, there was so much snow and it was difficult everywhere. But there was no attempt by the operators to make that walkway accessible. It is not safe. Previous to them operating, the city of Canora, when those barricades were open, made it wide enough for cars, pedestrians. We do live in a town where the sidewalks are right beside the road. So cars and pedestrians can work harmoniously between each other. Um, to my knowledge, there's no complaints to the police in regards to people speeding through there. And I've been a member of the OPP for twenty-six years. Uh, I've been in Canora for twenty years of that and, uh, it's very rare that I hear any complaints from the park. Susan has my number, we do communicate regularly, working together if there is any issues, whether it be whether I'm on duty time or off duty, I'm always there to help them. Uh, I don't have those open communications between myself and Dave so much, but, uh, um, we just don't see eye to eye on some issues, but that's, uh, besides the point. My thoughts are that that road can be left open, the barricades can be open. It will create a safe corridor for people to walk. Uh, there's not a lot of traffic that goes through vehicles. In the three years that they have operated through the wintertime, when they've expressed their interest in operating and creating businesses for their winter activities, there has been nothing that has done anything on that side of that park. The only thing that we see is the croquno, which is over by, I think it's croquno, over beside the building. Keeps that parking lot clear and the side parking lot close to there so people can park. And even with that, there is very, very little activity in regards to that. Um, so what we're proposing is those barricades stay open during the winter months. Um, they used to be open and it was good. If they're looking for tourism, it also helps them to provide visibility. Um, it's just like Canora, if we blocked off the road coming into Canora, tourism we're gonna see. If they have people going through there, they might see extra activities and it might create extra business for them. If you Google Maps in Ashen Abbey Park and you're coming in from the west side, which is, I would assume the majority of our tourism is coming from that side, it takes you right down Old Shalley Lane. I see people down there every year, all summer, all winter, whether it be skidoo's, are the trucks and trailers the skidoo's on or campers trying to turn around. Um, it's funny because I'm always out there and I always have to help them back down the road with their long trailers and back them around and turn them around. We're just asking for the barricades to be open so there can be a safe passage for not just vehicles, but more so pedestrians, the skidoo's. The skidoo club here, they need that access as well to get their machines down there because they can't go by the coast guard. Right now, they have to go back up Fourth Avenue South to make a long tour around to get back to safe ice to be able to continue on with their trails. So there's several safety aspects, but it's just accessibility and, and it might create extra tourism for them. Done, that's it.
Thanks, uh, any question?
Uh, big question, comment, so I regret not seeing this previously when this, this came out, I should have. But I did, uh, receive contact from a couple of residents on Lakeside Crescent who had said that they accessed the snowmobile trail, so that's it.
Yep.
From the east end of the park and the only way for them to do that without trailering is to go down Old Shalley, lean on their machines to get to the trail system, which then gets them anywhere they want to go.
Yeah.
So, um, I think keeping some sort of access to those people is particularly important as well.
It is, so last year what happened was the neighbor was plowing a road, he just uses a quad. Uh, with the given amount of snow we had last year, he could only do it as wide as a snow, like a ATV plow. What was happening is as people were walking and there was no effort by the park operators to keep that trail clear, the, it got narrow like the roads did and when somebody came by with a skidoo, the skidoo couldn't get up on the bank, the people that were walking had to. Um, my neighbor was like.
That's not ideal.
It is not, it was not safe. Um, and when the roads opened, I, I also contribute, like, we have a plow truck, a personal one. Um, we also help to keep it clean, keep it safe. Um, there's areas where I make extra curves in there so the cars can get by. They have visible, it's more visible going up the hill into Old Shalley Lane. Without that, people just can't walk, like, last year they couldn't at all. And people started going other places or just not walking at all. I know my neighbors, they couldn't walk it at all. So it's important to keep those lanes open and people can walk and drive beside each other. And if they have any concerns about dangerous drivers or anything like that, I've worked with Susan, Susan on these issues, I was there for when she got hit with ATV. Um, there was a resident that got charged this summer for driving inappropriate in the park on an ATV. So there is avenues that we can, and help with to keep that concern for her down.
Please.
Yes.
Uh, Councilor Bernie?
Thanks, Mike, uh, just a quick question. Um, as a, as a first responder, um, would you find it advantageous to have that, that laneway open? Just for example, if you were in McCannaway, say you were at the golf course and you got a nine-one-one calling Old Shalley, Old Shalley Lane, would that be advantageous to be able to go that way rather than go all the way around it?
Yeah, at any time, like, accessibility is number one, right? If you can keep laneway open, it's gonna provide an advantage to first responders or anybody, whether it be a private citizen, that is the fastest way to get to most places and go cut through the park there. And, because you're gonna get the McCannaway and then the seventeen corridor through town, which is probably the quickest way. People coming in from the east end of Canora, if they're trying to, if they Google Old Shalley and they're gonna, it's gonna take them through the park. Come from the west side, it's gonna take them through the park. It's all about accessibility, providing people with what you want to walk, whether it be in skidoo's, ATVs and everything. Um, but they have made efforts to completely block that access.
I guess my question is if there's a medical emergency, a fire, breaking in or something like that, seconds, minutes are precious.
Yep.
So.
So it would all help to, all that.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions? Uh, thank you very much, Michael, I'm sorry about that.
No, thank you for the opportunity to come back up here and talk, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, I will stay. Okay, uh, moving on the agenda, uh, five, or one point five, uh, Roberta, I'll hand that back to you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Council. Uh, so the purpose of this report, uh, is to discuss the twenty twenty-three economic adjustment to the professional and managerial pay grid. Um, just so that you are aware, this is an annual, uh, type of report or decision that will be made by council. Uh, it is in accordance with HR dash three dash one salary administration policy. Uh, the process, uh, that we have for the professional managerial or non-union group um, is, is of course different because there is no bargaining agent to approve or to negotiate wages with. Um, coming January one, uh, all of our collective agreements are in flight. So we're in the middle of collective agreements, uh, that are ongoing. Our bargaining age, or bargaining groups, uh, QB, IBW, KPFFA will all receive, uh, their negotiated wage increases. And that's why we're here today is because you are the sole approver of, uh, the professional and managerial pay grid. Uh, so economic adjustments are important for a couple of reasons. Uh, most, uh, often people think about recruitment, attraction and retention. Uh, what's I think really important right now is our self, uh, self-employment industry as well as internal relativity is one of those ones that are really driving in, in cases where, uh, wages are being discussed. Uh, you know, when we take a look at this, this group, this is a professional group, um, that has, uh, professional experience that is sought after. So that's the importance of this group. Um, in terms of the twenty twenty-three, uh, wages, uh, we've included here, uh, the increases for our, uh, union groups, which QB will receive a one-point-five, IBW one-point-five, KPFFA one, and then our QB library group, one-point-five. Um, what's important for council to consider when they are, uh, having discussion around the wage increases is really about the ability for the municipality to pay based on approved budget guidelines, our wage benefits that were provided to our union groups and the effective date of any, uh, economic adjustment. What's also very important to note, um, is that our Omer's pensions, pensioners will also receive a six percent increase in terms of their rates of pay. So that means, um, you know, when you're, you're talking about our, uh, workforce, especially in this group, uh, anyone who is able to retire, um, the ability to receive a higher rate when you retire. uh, anyone who is able to retire, um, the ability to receive a higher rate when you retire, on your severance than like what it is actually, uh, at work is also causing a little bit of imbalance here this year. Uh, so the following options are available for council to consider. Uh, you can consider, uh, any of these options. Uh, a one point five increase, which would be similar to what our bargaining group of QB, the largest group. One point three seven is really around, uh, an average of the four groups. Uh, an economic adjustment of a level determined by council or no economic adjustment at all. Uh, the budget impacts of this will go into whatever the decision is will be applied to the 2023 operating budget. Uh, just to give some reference, a one point five increase is about seventy-five thousand dollars as a whole for this whole group. Um, and that works out to be roughly just a little under a thousand dollars per person. Uh, inflation does present a high risk, uh, this year. Uh, it's unclear, uh, as to whether or not these high rates of inflation will become the new norm um, or really just a short-term market pressure, uh, but those types of things are really impacting the compensation, which is, you know, evident in the OMR's, uh, decision in terms of pensioners. Uh, so that is, uh, the economic adjustment. I will begin answering any questions.
Any questions, uh, council, uh, councilor Madsen?
Is there still, uh, a grid system in place for management as well as this?
Yes. So when we talk about economic adjustment, uh, we're talking about that percentage being applied to the grid. So it's applied, um, across all of the salary bands and it ensures that that band, uh, grows and moves in accordance with the rest of the, um, labor groups.
And how many of management is that being integrated?
Uh, that I, I have to get that exact number for you.
Uh, any other questions? No. Uh, thanks, Roberta. And just to remind everybody enough, this discussion will, uh, looking for some direction. And that will come up in camera later on in the day. Okay. Uh, okay. Thank you, Roberta. Uh, moving on, uh, three point one, Coker Road closure update. Marco, are you going to take this?
Yep. Good morning, Mayor Council. Uh, here to provide you an update and a status update, I guess, of the Coker Road. Um, so delve into a little bit of history, I guess, uh, going back to the May-June floods in 2022 here. So back at that time, during those flood event, or that specific flood event, there was about three hundred and seventy meters length of road that was inundated with water, anywhere from about a foot and a half to two feet of water. That submerged the road back in that time period with the high waters, uh, being experienced on Black Sturgeon Lake. So when the floodwater started to recede in June, uh, there was, it was noticed that there were several, uh, or there were several incidents of deterioration on the road that was noticed, like potholes and, you know, surface granular degradation and, and surface deformations on the road that was limited to the surface characteristics of the road at the time when it was inspected. So when the, uh, floodwater started to stabilize in June, uh, the EOC committee uh, brought forth their report to council at that time. Uh, and one of the options that was presented to council then was, uh, to either fix the road in terms of putting it back to its original state, just re-graveling the road and bring it back to its normal state. Or as a second option to actually raise the road at the time to try and, and alleviate any future potential flood conditions that may happen. So on June tenth, uh, special medium council was, uh, summoned and it was, uh, decided upon that, uh, the grade raise option was the option that the council, that they wanted to proceed on. The engineering and infrastructure staff, uh, security contractors, so that work was, uh, that consisted of reinforcing the road with various types of geofabric and geo-grid reinforcing materials, uh, in addition to replacing some culverts and the addition of gravel to build up the surface of the road to, uh, to the flood levels that were experienced earlier in the spring was conducted and completed at around the end of June. So the, the, uh, work that was done in June was thought to have been a, a, a solution to future flooding, uh, based on the known history of the road at that time. So, so for several decades during, uh, you know, Jeffrey Malik and into amalgamation here, there was very little uh, detriment or, or poor, uh, conditions of the road at that time at this specific location where the flooding occurred. So there was no known previous history of significant settlements, uh, on that road. So as time progressed, we were, uh, in a position to monitor that, uh, specific location in terms of having, uh, we were looking at fall and spring, uh, surveys of the road to make sure that the road was in a stable condition and that if there was any, uh, future detriment, detriment to the road, or at least confirming that the road was in a stable condition where it was going to occur and, and be stable for the, for the future. So on October twenty-eighth was our first set of, uh, of surveys on the road, which proved to have very little, uh, minimal settlements that were, uh, to be expected for a gravel road and such. Uh, five days later, on November seven, or second, the, uh, road is getting some maintenance from the local or the city roads crews and there was some noticeable, uh, dip into the road, which is brought forth to the, uh, the roads department and engineering. And then on, the next day on November third is when, um, the, uh, the, the large failure occurred where the road slipped down almost about a three feet or about a meter on one side of the road in a localized area of that repair and grade raise, which we feel is about twenty-five percent of the area that was, uh, originally rehabilitated and brought up, uh, for flood purposes back in June. So with that being, uh, said, we can see in the report here some of the photos and what the, the road looked like, you know, shortly after the, the June grade raise and what the road looked like, uh, on the left-hand side picture there, uh, after the failure in November. Subsequently, the road got closed, uh, uh, due to the concerns of safety to the traveling public. Uh, we weren't quite sure if this was, uh, going to be just a one-time event or, uh, you know, there was more to occur with subsidence and detriment to the road. So during the period of, uh, November sixth to the tenth, we did, um, or sorry, from the third to the tenth, we did numerous investigation, not investigation, inspections of the road to, uh, determine its state, whether it was, uh, either stabilizing or not, or whether more detriment was going to occur. So on November sixth, it was noticed that about at that point in time, it seemed like the road was, uh, not deteriorating any further. And we waited until about November tenth to, to give it a few more days to ensure that we had, uh, some confidence that the road was no further, wasn't further failing and to see what options were available to the city to try and, and address the affected road. So on November fourteenth, it was decided to start rehabilitating the road. So again, we had, uh, put in some geotech style fabrics and grids to, to further reinforce the road. Uh, we started putting gravel back onto the road to try and build it up to its, its original June, uh, elevation, uh, above the flood level. And over time, I guess, until approximately November twenty-second, the rehabilitation period, we'd noticed that the road was still somewhat failing in some form or fashion in terms of localized settlements at that one area again. So it was decided with the, uh, with the, uh, continuing, uh, settlement and destabilization of the road that we, uh, on November twenty-fourth, we brought a, a drill rig in to poke into the ground and see where, uh, you know, depth to bedrock was, because that's usually the best type of condition you can have underneath the road is the bedrock for stability. So upon that drilling operation, we found that, uh, you know, bedrock was still, you know, almost fifty feet down, uh, below the surface of the road and with the, the ease of that drilling rig going through that material down to bedrock, it's, uh, it was determined that the underlying soils of the road base were quite, uh, mucky and, and not really good materials for a road base to sit on, especially with the, uh, the proximity of the bog and the adjoining, uh, area of Black Sturgeon. So at that point in time, we ceased operations. We further, uh, have kept the road closed with the, uh, going forward, what we're looking at doing is bringing in a geotechnical engineer, uh, and some expertise to actually do some proper bore holes in the specific area to determine what underlying conditions and soils there are and have that specific, uh, engineer who's trained in geotechnical engineering to give options or some solutions that may be viable. Uh, you know, in terms of today's current engineering standards and construction methods. So we are looking to, uh, try and bring that back to the table to council to, uh, come back with some options for council to look at. There is, uh, one possibility of, of potentially opening up maybe one lane to traffic in the short term. But we will be basing that decision and, or that option to council based on the geotechnical investigation. Uh, you know, we don't want to, uh, open up a half a road because the current failure area is, is, uh, localized to one half of the road and on one side of the road being the westbound lane. So in, in, we've initiated discussions with the geotechnical engineer at this point and, um, in talks this, as early as this morning, it was identified that the geotechnical work potentially probably won't happen until January based on, on certain schedules for drillers and certain equipment to come in to, to perform that work and get the necessary bore holes and soil investigation that the engineers would need to, to look at. So it, it looks like it might be a little bit more time before we get the necessary feedback and results from the geotechnical engineering, uh, portion that we're looking at, uh, trying to do here in the near future to make a decision on that road. So at this point, it still remains closed, uh, you know, due to the safety of, of the public and making sure that we don't have, uh, a situation where, uh, you know, vehicles or anybody using that road might come into peril or, 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 you know, danger, I guess. So at this point in time, um, we would be looking to provide more information to council in the future when we can get some geotechnical engineering, uh, you know, back on our laps here, some alternatives and whatnot and what options they may come, come up with. Uh, even the short-term solution may be opening up one lane later in the winter. So that's, that's pretty much where we're at and I guess in terms of a quick kind of history to date on what we've done a, as of the floods and where we kind of stand today in terms of the condition of the road and what, uh, you know, the city's looking at doing here in the near future to try and get some information back on that road to make some future decisions and options to council.
Thanks, Marco. Uh, counselor Von Creve and then counselor Madsen.
Thanks, Your Worship. So we've been speaking to, um, residents who've been out there for a long time. Somewhere between October twenty-eighth and November third, they're alleging that that's when the corduroy failed. Uh, do you think that's a fair statement?
That period of time is roughly when, when we see, when we started to see destabilization of the road, uh, between the twenty-eighth and November third or fourth. And, uh, that's the reason why the road was closed eventually there that, in that early period of November. It's unknown what, what was done in the past, whether there is corduroy underneath that road or not. Uh, obviously the drilling investigations with the geotechnical work would probably confirm that in one way or another, uh, if corduroy even exists underneath that road, uh, or not. But over the, the, uh, couple of periods of-
The old timers say that it's there.
It's there, yeah. So, you know, with the amount of, of, uh, mud and, and other poor materials underneath that road, it's hard to say if that corduroy, uh, was put in at some point in the past, how deep it might have sunk into the mud and has lost its stability, especially with the floodwaters and the amount of saturation it saw for that extended period, uh, of those, you know, two, two and a half months. So the, it would probably be determined where that corduroy is, if there is any, uh, through the geotechnical investigations and the drilling. I'm sure they'll come up with some, uh, you know, wood product or, or wood or logs or whatnot that the corduroy, uh, exists. And perhaps that might give us, you know, some idea of where that, the road currently sits in terms of its stability and if the corduroy is even still manageable or, or still working to some, some extent.
So of course, safety is our concern and, uh, just adding to that, I think if there's any sort of, um, numbers that you have about that road usage, I know you do axle counts in various places. I don't know how recently you've done that on that road, but before decisions made, maybe we could have some idea of how many people are in convenience of roads.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't, uh, commit to say that we have any specific vehicle counts, uh, on that specific piece of road. It, perhaps it's more of a, of an analysis on who lives on the road and what directions they might drive, how close they are to that specific, uh, location. I, I know there's been some, uh, inquiries about, you know, school buses not being able to traverse the road and make the loop, which is inconvenient some. Uh, you know, we've been in discussions with emergency services to make sure they're aware of which side they need to come in for any kind of given emergency, uh, either side of that, that, uh, that area. So it, I would say it would be a, an estimation on how many vehicles might use that section of road. Um, I would have to think in the summer, probably a little bit more with seasonal residents that live up on that end would, uh, you know, be using that road system a little bit more than maybe, uh, some of the locals that are there full-time. Yeah, so I, I don't know if we can really come up with a number, uh, of vehicles that use that road at this point in time without actually doing a vehicle count, which you can't do if the road is closed. So we'd be kind of behind the eight ball, but something that maybe that could be looked at in the future, uh, if that kind of data is necessary.
I know they were doing it on the bridge, say, for example, but that doesn't really count because you don't know here which road, do you believe?
Yeah, uh, uh, some of the small, some of the more localized roads, you know, the Coker and all the offshoots of it, uh, yeah, it'd be more difficult to get those traffic counts for sure. You know, you, we could do some, uh, again, like I said, estimation based on the number of residents and, and using kind of common knowledge and engineering practices out of engineering, you know, traffic books to say so many residents, so many vehicles per day, you know, based on an average and, and a theoretical type of calculation.
What are you hearing from people?
Uh, we have heard from one who's been affected, uh, in, in a couple of capacities. One is the school bus and, and the children, or their children's pickup for school. And also the access to their, to their mailbox, which was unfortunately on the other side, uh, of the, the, the area. So they're having to make the full loop back and forth each way through the, the southern loop.
And we have, uh, reached out to both, um, Student First and the post office, you know, to see if there is some accommodation that can be made. But of course, that's not up to us, but we have communicated the situation to those two organizations.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, uh, next counselor.
Yeah, some of my questions was how many residents is it affecting? How much feedback? Can you kind of answer that? My other question is, what communication have we done to the people on that road? Have we done individual communication or has it been abroad?
Uh, it's been abroad. There's, there's no individuals living in the affected area between where the failures occurring. So they're either on one side or the other.
Okay.
Counselor Byrne and then counselor.
Just high level here, Marco. I don't expect you to give any details, but, uh, options to fix it.
Yeah, and that's what we're really waiting for, that, that information to come back from the geotechnical engineer. Um, you know, I, I suppose if, if the, uh, the poor material underneath that section of road would have been much less in terms of its depth, we could have probably looked at more in-house, maybe conventional type of, of, uh, of repairs to it. Um, so really looking at, at the information and, and the options provided from a geotechnical engineer based on, like counselor Von Creve said, is there corduroy underneath there? Is it serving any purpose? Uh, you know, what types of materials are underneath there? Um, so we're really, you know, looking for, um, information, uh, from that geotechnical investigation to guide our, our, you know, I guess our decision-making going forward. The other thing that, uh, you know, we will look at in-house here is potentially, or the potential of, of maybe relocating the road or realigning the road, perhaps off of this specific area of concern. Um, so that's probably one of the options we'll, we'll investigate internally to, to see. Um, right now, north of that road, uh, we're in a favorable position, I'd say, because that- that land is owned by the Crown. So there might be some opportunity to gain some lands from the Crown to maybe realign that road in a more adequate area and off the bog and away from, you know, potential floodwaters that it would address, but also the, you know, the current poor materials underneath that road. So that's one option we have considered or have in the back of our minds going forward also.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Chase.
Thank you, Your Worship. Marco, I apologize for missing the beginning of your presentation. So again, if this was already discussed, my apologies. Given that we're heading into winter season, things are freezing up. I mean, is there enough stability in that bog in terms of ice conditions to create a temporary access or have some type of a rev that goes through there now that things are freezing up?
I wouldn't say a temporary, but that's one of the options we are looking at potentially to open up one lane, at least for the small volume of traffic that we feel would be going down that road might accommodate one lane of traffic where, you know, signs would be put up to say yield on coming traffic and they would share one lane, you know, similar to a situation like in Kuwait and where we share the bridge going across Portage there, Portage Bay. So that is one option we want to look at. But again, I don't think we want to investigate that option until we get some information back from the geotechnical drilling. Obviously, I think that drilling will give us some idea of how, how stable the road surface would be in terms of the frost into it and whatnot. So that is one thing we are considering, but I think until we feel comfortable to get that information back and the core drilling back, that I think we stay a status quo for health and safety purposes for people using that road. So that is one option we are looking at to potentially try and, and open up one lane later this winter after we get some confirmation back from the geotechnical investigation.
Thank you.
Yep.
It's just more of a comment. I am looking at your map now. I'm sorry, I didn't realize earlier, but I think that's where the snowmobile trail is up. And if you start interviewing Broke Night at the Red, you're gonna hear a lot more about this because that's a thing.
Well, snowmobiles should be able to traverse the road. I'm assuming they don't go down the road, but cross the road.
They cross it right there. That's the trail, I think.
So they, I guess they would have to try and figure something out there. So the, the area in question, I don't think that would be the exact location because right where the failure area is, there's a little rock cut. So I think they would have to be probably one side or the other, east or west of that specific failed area. But perhaps that's something we'll have to touch base with maybe the Sunset Trail Riders or not sure if that's a sanctioned trail or if that's just a-
Oh gosh, that conversation? I don't think it's that conversation. I think it is a trail, a group trail.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now perhaps we should maybe touch base and listen to them.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions at council?
Thanks Marco. Sooner the better. I know myself and I've had, I don't know, I've stopped counting now the calls I've had about, and not that they're upset or whatever, but it is more, and I think you kind of alluded to that about the timeline. They're just one, you know, is this thing, you know, I think they've come to the realization it could be longer than they anticipated to get that information and, you know, do remediation and that. Like, I mean, it's gonna have to be done right, whatever happens, but there's also gonna be a cost to fix it. So we have to be, you know, we're gonna have to take all that into consideration when we're making decisions. So thank you very much.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's a, it's a similar type of situation and process that we ran into Pinecone, right? So it took several months to try and, and, you know, find the root cause of the problem, what the solutions were, and then finally get the work done. So-
But that wasn't closed though. That's the difference.
Yes, we were fortunate enough there that it was, it was more of an embankment on the shoulder as opposed to the full width of the road or a majority of the width of the road in this specific location. So we were able to, you know, keep one lane of traffic open to Pinecone, you know, during that period of time. So it is a bit of a different situation that way, but, you know, the steps and the length of time are going to be very similar.
I just wanted, I just wanted to reiterate, we, we went to every length that we could with our in-house techniques to try and address this issue, you know. So we recognize it's inconvenient. We really have exhausted our internal options at this point.
And just, just before we move on, I mean, communication is like however we can communicate this out and continue to communicate it as we move through this process is vitally important. I think we've made that commitment as a new council to ensure that that occurs. So we would hope that that will follow soon. And I'm not suggesting that methods from before didn't work and that, but we just have to ensure that we're communicating this out in an orderly fashion. So, thank you.
Okay, moving on to some good news, I guess. 4.1, application to the Ontario Trillium Fund. And Stace, you're gonna take this one?
Yeah, thank you very much. Counsel, the report before you was related to a recommendation an authorized administration to submit an application to the Ontario Trillium Fund under its Resiliency Communities Fund for the MUSE. This is a funding envelope that is just come out. It's the first time the municipalities can apply for it and it's directly a result of COVID and the funding is intended to support projects that are immediate or longer term in nature. Applicants can apply for up to $200,000 under this envelope and there is no requirement for the municipality to have any matching dollars, which is quite unusual. Projects should demonstrate that they're developing new approaches, that they're starting new activities, adjusting strategies, or planning for future challenges. The reason that this project is required and this funding is required is that when the daily miner news shut down, they gave all of their old material to the MUSE. So they've got boxes and rings of all of this information and the purpose of the project is to get monies to digitize all of that. So the total ask of Trillium would be $110,000. We would be purchasing some hardware, which includes a scanner for larger box, hard drives to store the data, and then also some labor to support the effort. From a MUSE's perspective, it's kind of a cool opportunity because sometimes when research is being done, it generates revenue. So this could be a new revenue opportunity for the MUSE as well. So from that perspective, it's pretty cool. So the funding or the budget, again, no financial impact to the municipality and from a risk perspective, the, the risk is really based on not applying for the funding. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to the council? Thanks, Stace. So moving on to item 5.1, application to Fednor Investment Attraction Project. And Stace, I guess you're on again?
Yep, thank you very much. So this report is related to the specific application to Fednor. The ask of Fednor would be $270,000. Part of this recommendation would be that council confirms its commitment to the project. So it's 10% or $30,000 and we would fund this through MATT tax revenue. And one thing that you'll see with most applications is a line that says that council hereby approves any cost overruns associated with this project. This is very true for about 95% of the applications that you'll see, just so you know. Clearly, COVID had a major impact on the city of Kenora's new development that was to take place and basically everything stood still for a couple of years. You know, moving forward, the city of Kenora will focus on a strategy to accelerate investment attraction, economic growth and recovery. There's two guiding documents that really support this project. One is the STRA Plan. The other one is the five-year economic development and tourism strategy. In terms of the project itself, there's two phases to it. Phase one is going to be a lot of data analysis, analysis of the city itself and just sector reviews, trying to target specific industries that might be a good fit for Kenora. And then the second part is what I'll call the build phase. So that's taking all of that data and all that information and building it into something that I'll say is camera-ready so that as developers come to us, we can cobble together bits of information that might be important to them. Key deliverables are going to be a labor market. Research is going to be done, sector analysis and review for industries that would want to target to locate Kenora, analysis of the city of Kenora itself, things like schools, the airport, major, minor employer, support industries, some housing data. And ultimately, when developers are looking to make a decision in a community that they might be interested in, they need information. They're going to be building their own feasibility studies. Other municipalities are going to try to attract them to their particular municipality. So this is going to give us the ability to very quickly turn very high-quality documents to these developers in a way that is going to give them the information that they need to evaluate opportunity. The overall project is going to be $300,000, again, $270,000 from Fednor and $30,000 from MAT. From a risk perspective, there's always the risk if you don't apply for these things that you won't be able to do the project. But I think that having the ability to accelerate the relationship with developers through proper information is very important. So I think that this will really give us a leg up as we look to stimulating things in the market.
Counselor Chase and then Counselor-
Thank you, Your Worship. Stace, I recall when I was on the commission in maybe 2018 or 2019, that a very similar project was completed, at least it sounds very similar. Has this, is there a neat, like, is, is the outcome of that project no longer relevant because things have changed so much because of COVID or what? It just feels like we're kind of duplicating that effort that was done not that long ago. So I'm just curious why-
I'm not familiar with that study, if you will, or any sort of, the last major sector profile review that was done was actually with Jennifer Williams here. So if you look at a lot of the data that we have, it's old, okay? It's not current, it's not at the level it needs to be. If you go and speak to developers, they talk about them wanting a playbook basically from the city of Kenora. So this allows us to sort of build that playbook.
Thank you.
Sure. Counselor Noham, Counselor Moncrief and then Counselor Pacheco and anybody else.
Being the part of this is that we hereby approve any cost overs associated with the project. Does that come out of the MATT tax as well? Any overruns? Should there be any?
Typically, what would happen is if we do not have budget, we would come back to council with a budget amendment. And when we do that, we would suggest make recommendations in terms of how we would pay for that at that time. I, when, when I look at $300,000 for this particular project and conversations that we would have with consultants in preparation to do this application, I feel that there's adequate budget there. Yeah.
And I just wanted to add, Counselor, the first time when I got here, I saw that, I was like, whoa, possible. So that's actually language that you're gonna see on a regular basis with any of these funding applications. It's sort of one of the preconditions. So it sounds scarier than it is, but we do, we do our best to hit that budget and if we would need to go over, we would come back to council as well.
Counselor Moncrief.
Who's gonna be doing it? Who's doing this?
We would go to tender for this.
So it's outside of the-
That's right. So we would have, and, and you know, there'd be a lot of engagement through this process.
Okay, I'm sure it was getting out of the-
Yeah, we would go external.
So you're contracting it?
Yeah.
My other question, I just left, I believe, was tourism is in the title, but I don't really see any specific tourism mentioned in the tactic section. So just wanted to ask you.
There's always a very tight link between economic development and tourism. So this is really intended, I mean, we will end up gleaning all sorts of information as a result of this that maybe we can apply to a tourism sort of play, but really this is about development attraction.
As you know, we haven't set our priorities yet. I'm wondering if what the timeline is for Fednor application and-
Good question. And amongst ourselves, we actually have that. So phase one, we will, we're hoping to hear in two to three weeks. And then we're hoping that within 90 days after that. It really depends on their meeting schedule and that sort of thing. And like NOHFC, for example, they, they don't, they don't let us know when those meetings, board meetings are gonna take place when they're evaluating these, these applications. So it kind of just floats in the, in the background there. So we don't really know clearly the timelines, but we can sort of suggest that it would be around the 90 to 120 days.
So do they have an open program and does applying for one prevent you from applying again for another year or is there any-
It, it really depends on the particular funding envelope that takes place. So the earlier application that you would have seen for the MUSE, for example, we didn't want to compete with that particular application. We have added discussions with Fednor where there's a feeling that this is a good fit for them. So we kind of gave up the resiliency funding for the MUSE and we thought that this would be a good fit for Fednor.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Counselor Pacheco.
Thank you, Counselor Bumbum. Have asked my question.
There you go. Okay, I've seen no other questions in that. Thanks very much, Stace. Good luck. I know you, you have a very good, and your staff have a very good record of accomplishments in these areas. So there's all the best. Thank you. So moving on the agenda, so under other, next meeting, so subject to confirmation, the December 20th council meeting. Our next meeting will be on Wednesday, January 11th, 2023 for Committee of the whole. So again, just keep bearing that in mind. So we have a motion to adjourn to close meeting.
Resolution number two, Mike Isla, consecutive by Counselor Bernie, that this meeting now be adjourned to closed session at 11:05 a.m. and further that pursuant to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001, as amended authorization was hereby given for committee to move into a closed session to discuss items pertaining to the following. Labor relations to matters salary review and vacancy, disposition of land, one matter, application to purchase municipal property, personal matter above an identifiable individual, two matters, Northwestern Health Institute, and accessory advisory committee appointments. A trade secret, scientific, technical, commercial, financial, or labor relations information applied in confidence to the municipality or local board which have disclosed reasonably be expected. In pursuit of significantly competitive position or interferes significantly with contractual or other negotiations of a person, group of persons, or organization, or matter police coalition.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Carrie.
I want to call this meeting to order, please. It's new. So, I would like to call on Counselor Bernie to do a landing speech, please.
As we gather, we recognize that we are on Treaty III lands which are steeped in rich Indigenous history and home to many First Nations and Métis people today. We continue to be thankful for the partnerships with Indigenous people. We give thanks for the many blessings we enjoy in the city of Kenora. We seek wisdom in our minds, clearness in our thinking, truth in our speaking, and always love in our hearts so that we may try always to unite the citizens of Kenora, let these principles guide us in our decision-making.
Thank you. So, moving on the agenda, Council Declaration of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. So, on today's agenda from previous meeting, or from a meeting at which a member was not in attendance, seeing none. Item number one, applications being considered. So, the zoning bylaw amendment, D-14-22-07, civic address, unaddressed property, Nelson Street, registered owner, Area Developments Kenora Inc., agent, not applicable. I will call on the applicant for their presentation for the planning application.
I didn't realize I was making a presentation.
Well, you don't have to, but you're providing an opportunity, so.
We've asked for, I'm Fred Wright. I'm Fred Wright. I'm one of the partners in Area Development. We have applied for a change in zoning from R1 to R2. The property is in a neighborhood. We believe that our plans are compatible with the neighborhood. We've actually had positive comments from some of the neighbors, which is a pleasant change. And we haven't had any negative comments that we're aware of. So, Kevin has a report for you, I think.
Thanks, Fred. So, moving on, item number two, city planner report. So, Kevin, I'll leave that with you.
Yes. Good afternoon, your worship, council. I'm happy to say that today is going to be probably one of the more simple reports you hear from me over the next four years. There'll be, I'm sure there will be many more entertaining ones. What we have today here is an application for zoning amendment, as Mr. Wright has already stated, to change the zoning of a property on Nelson Street, currently unaddressed, from R1 residential first density zone to R2 residential second density zone. And the purpose of that is to amend the zoning to permit the development of a property, of the property with a duplex dwelling, which is not permitted under the current R1 zone. The subject property is currently cleared and vacant. It is a fully serviced lot with approximately fifteen and a half meters of frontage on Nelson Street and an area of approximately 435 square meters. The applicant has indicated that the lot has always been vacant, but the municipal records indicate that dwelling was located on the property previously, as recently as 1987. There is no record of when that dwelling was removed. There's a photo of the property in the report from sunnier days when you could see the site fairly well. Just going to review legislated policy and city directives and the compliance of the proposed rezoning with that. We start with the provincial policy statement 2020, which all zoning amendments have to be in compliance with or respect the general direction of. The provincial policy statement, or PPS, directs planning authorities to provide for an appropriate range and mix of housing options and densities to meet projected market-based and affordable housing needs of current and future residents. This is to be achieved by various means, and I've highlighted a couple that stand out, which being directing the development of new housing towards locations where appropriate levels of infrastructure and public service facilities are or will be available to support current projected needs, and permitting and facilitating all housing options required to meet the social, health, economic, and well-being requirements of current and future residents, including special needs requirements and needs arising from demographic changes and employment opportunities. The next document I'll refer to is the city of Kenora's official plan 2015. The land use designation of this property and surrounding properties is established area. Residential development is encouraged as infilling and redevelopment of full municipal services. Medium-density residential use is supported, provided that the development is in keeping with the character of the area. The development is proposed would qualify as medium-density, or 17 to 40 units per net hectare. Minor changes to land use that are compatible with existing land uses do not result in significant increases to traffic, dust, odor, or noise, and are similar in scale to the surrounding built form, and that improve the quality of life for area residents may be permitted through an amendment to the zoning bylaw. Then finally, in regards to the city's zoning bylaw itself, as I've noted previously, it's zoned R1, which allows for the development of single-detached housing and other compatible uses serviced by municipal sewer and water, or with municipal water only. The R1 zone does not permit the development of a duplex, and therefore the zoning amendment. The proposed R2 zoning does allow for the development of single detached, as well as semi-detached and semi-detached housing, and other compatible uses on municipal water and sewer, including a duplex. Minimum lot area and frontage requirements in the R2 zone are the same as those in the R1 zone, which is 450 square meters of lot area and 15 meters of frontage. At 435 square meters, the lot is equally, or approximately 3 percent undersized for both zones, and therefore no minor variance is required. Now, we did complete interdepartmental and interagency circulation where we sent this application out to relevant city departments and external agencies. The only two comments we received back were from our land acquisition and development officer noting concerns about the lot size, that it is undersized as an R2 lot, and by one means of calculating the density, it would come out to 45.9 units per net hectare. The established areas, I've already noted, support 17 to 40 units per net hectare, and I'll come back to that in a few minutes. And also, we received comments back from CP Rail. So, they make reference to their proximity guidelines that CP and CN came up with in 2013, and direct attention to their website where they have those detailed. There's a report that can be found at the link they noted, and they respectfully requested that the recommended guidelines be followed. And then they added a sort of a specific comment here, which is, this is a bit of a unique one to me, at least in recent history, where they've recommended that all property and tenancy agreements and offers of purchase and sale for all dwelling units in the proposed building contain the condition that a CPR right-of-way and/or yard is located adjacent to the subject land with operations conducted 24 hours a day, seven days a week, including the shunting of trains and the idling of locomotives. There may be alterations to or expansions of the railway facilities and/or operations in the future, which alterations or expansions may affect the living environment of the residents in the vicinity. Notwithstanding the inclusion of any noise and/or vibration, attenuating measures in the design of the development and individual dwellings, the CPR will not be responsible for complaints or claims arising from the use of its facilities and/or its operations on, over, or under the fore-said right-of-way and/or yard. Now, and then finally, in regards to public circulation and comments. So, notice of the application was given in accordance with Section 34 of the Planning Act and circulated to persons in public bodies as legislated, so that includes all property owners within 120 meters of the subject property. The planning advisory committee met on October 18th and had a hearing on their recommendations, including the package for council. As of the date of this report, well, as of today's date, we did receive one comment from a member of the public, which we attached. The author expresses concern regarding losing their driveway access. So, finally, turning to my evaluation, the proposed zoning amendment, in my opinion, from R1 to R2 is appropriate to permit development of a duplex on the property. Both the provincial policy statement and the official plan are supportive of infill development, which makes efficient use of existing infrastructure, and which will provide dwelling units to meet the housing needs of the community. The official plan is supportive of medium-density development, which is defined as The official plan is supportive of medium-density development, which is defined as 17 to 40 units per net hectare. Some discretion, in my opinion, needs to be applied as to the interpretation of these limits. It is the practice of the city to approve two-unit dwellings on properties that meet the minimum lot size requirement of 450 square meters in the R2 zone. A strict calculation of net density based on lot area provides a calculation of 1.8 units on a 450-square-meter property, being equivalent to 40 units on a 1-hectare property. At approximately 435 square meters, the same calculation works out to 1.74 units on this subject property, which is similar enough to support a full two-unit duplex, just if you apply rounding, which otherwise meets all applicable regulations in the R2 zone. The driveways of adjacent properties are entirely located on the municipal right-of-way and will not be obstructed by development of the subject property. And just to add one extra note about the CPR comments, we do see a variety of CPR comments. As you know, a lot of properties in the city of Kenora are near the CPR line, which runs right through the middle of our community. In this case, there's a pretty good-sized ridge of rock between the subject property and the CPR lines, which CPR may not have been looking at topographic maps when they provide their comments. So I see personally no reason to be concerned about proximity to the CPR line yard, but it's certainly good for the developer to know that CPR has concerns. That, you know, it doesn't hurt to bring those to the attention of anybody buying a property nearby -- near the rail lines. You do get used to that noise fairly quickly, but it can be something that somebody's not prepared for. With that, that concludes my report. My recommendation is that council approve the application for zoning bylaw amendment, file number D-14-22-07, change the zoning of the subject property from R1 to R2 zone.
Thanks, Kevin. So moving on the agenda, item number three, public comment. So I think we've heard one of the comments, or you provided a comment, which would have been from the public, but I see nobody in chambers today to discuss this. So we'll move on to item number four, which is questions of council. And bear in mind, it's just more for clarification, either from our staff, the planner, or from the applicant, and the -- any decisions that we will make in a subsequent meeting, which will be the 20th of September, it'll come forward as a recommendation. So... Is there any questions of any councilor? No? Okay. You were right. Item number five, close of the public meeting. This meeting is to be declared closed following any comments and questions.
No, it's just you just closed.
Yeah, so it's at 12:12.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So, welcome back into the open session of our committee of the whole. Now, there's a, there should be three recommendations.
There is your worship. So from the closed session, we have three reports coming to the open session. One, the Northwestern Health Unit appointment. Two, the Accessibility Advisory Committee appointment. And three, the 2023 Economic Adjustment Professional Managerial Pay Grid. I will speak to the first two reports, which are my reports. The first one is the Northwestern Health Unit appointment. And council has supported the appointment of Rebecca Weinberg to the Board of Health for the Northwestern Health Unit for a term at the pleasure of council no later than November 14, 2026. Second is the Accessibility Advisory Committee. There, the council has supported Chad English to the Accessibility Advisory Committee for a term at the pleasure of council no later than November 14, 2026. And I will turn the 2023 economic adjustment over to Roberta.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Also for the report on 2023 economic adjustment, the recommendation will read that council hereby review and consider economic adjustment to the professional and managerial grid at the rate of 1.5% effective January 1, 2023 in accordance with HR-3-1 salary administration policy.
And Lynn, would you like to?
Oh, yes.
Yeah?
Your worship, I'll just declare a conflict on the first report out of the closed session, the appointment to Northwestern Health Unit's Board of Health as it relates to my employment.
Thank you. Thank you. So is there any discussion on those three items? Going with intuition. Okay, well. Okay, well, thank you for today. I mean, it was our, kind of our first official meeting. And, see, we transacted some business. A lot, a lot quicker than I thought we would. I thought we'd be here till supper time. So anyhow, thanks for everybody's participation. And if there's nothing else, I am going to adjourn this meeting.